Welcome everyone, this is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is July 11th, it is 4:30 PM. Mr. Woner had a schedule in conflict with tonight's meeting, so he will not be present, so does Mr. Inkley and myself. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who stands for the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business we have on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Commission of Trust Funds to appoint. Is there, there is a quorum from the Commission of Trust, is there a motion to call for the joint meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Will the Commission of Trust open their meeting?
Close your own. Second. Not a second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So both boards are now open. We're here tonight to, for a joint meeting with the Commission of Trust Funds to review letters of interest and appoint a Commissioner of Trust Funds to fill a vacancy from failure to elect on May 13, 2023 annual town election. Some of you may not know, Mr. John Roy was elected to both seats. He cannot accept, obviously, both seats, so we put out a notice 30 days or so ago of letters of interest. We have one letter of interest from Ms. Labonte, it says please accept. This is my letter of interest to fill the vacancy for Commission of Trust Funds due to failure to elect at the most recent May 13 annual town election. I believe my education, work, experience in Bacon and my banking and my background with the town of Acushnet will complement to the current Commissioners of Trust. As you know, I have worked with the town, serving as a town clerk for the last 15 years, and prior to being elected to this position, I spent 18 years in Bacon Banking with the majority of my time in managing. The Commission of Trust Funds position was established by the town in 1922 for the purpose of overseeing and managing the trust funds given and queenth for the benefit of the town and its inhabitants. This is an important role which has been underserved over the last few years with a lack of interest on the ballot. I would like to work with the current Commissioners to revitalize this committee, investigate current trust funds, and manage the funds as directed by their donors. If appointed until the next annual town election, it will be my pleasure to serve the town in this capacity. Ms. Labonte, we have here tonight, would you like to say a few words other than what I just read?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Pam Labonte to the Commission of Trust Funds?
Second.
Was it a roll call vote?
It was a motion.
There was a motion and a second?
By the Commission of Trust, motion second, roll call vote, Mr. Inkley?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Mr. Roy?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsat?
Yes.
What a unanimous vote, congratulations, Ms. Labonte, you are appointed to the Commission of Trust Funds until the next election.
Thank you.
And thank you for putting your name in the hat and serving and helping out Mr. Roy and Mr. Lipsat. Is there a motion to adjourn the joint meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Commission of Trust is now adjourned. Thank you. Ms. Labonte, you can see the town clerk to be sworn in.
I will call the moderator.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. The next order of business is a petition from ENSTAR doing business as ever source to install one, what they call an FO pole to be labeled 153, it has 1.5 approximately 75 feet southwest of an existing pole 1531 on Rock Street. The installation of this pole is being requested to provide electrical service for 36 Rock Street. Butters notices have gone out to a butters, do we have any of butters? Is there any comments from the butters?
Just want to know where the pole's going and why it's going up.
So the location's actually right in front of, by the map, I don't know if you folks will mail the map?
No, we don't have.
If you'd like to see mine, Bob, you want to give this to the other?
Yes.
You can have mine, so just make sure they know that that's the one right there? Nope, just going to let you see the point, right there, with the arrows pointing? There's that one? Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. Inkley. Of course.
There's a new building going in.
Yeah, I know this is, I know the building is there, are they going to take down the old pole that's?
No, because this customer's going underground, so to lessen the cost for, for the, the person owning the building. If we went from pole 153 over one, which is to the right of the facility, of the property, it's a longer way and it's going to cost the customer less money to go from that point. So they wouldn't, and they're going underground, so we're going to put the pole in and then it's going underground to the house.
So what I'm assuming is you have a pole way over here, you have a pole way over here, they're going to put an additional pole in front of the 36 Rock Street?
Correct.
Which is the applicant that's requesting power service?
That's correct.
And then from that pole, it'll go underground, the wires won't come from the pole, it'll go underground to the dwelling that's there.
That's correct.
So it's an additional pole to sister up the wires?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
There's not going to be residents there, right? It's just the garage?
Is that what it's serving as a garage?
It says new building on my, that it's a new building. Yes, yep, because 36 is off here to the right, the actual, their actual home.
Sorry, I am the owner of the barn that was put there. The barn is simply for me to store things in it, there's no animals, there's no people, there's nothing except I want to put in the lock and key trailers and so forth.
So it's your property of 36 Rock Street?
Correct.
Thank you for explaining that, so there you go, you have the actual owner of the property here. So it's, it's like a garage, a barn, we call it barn, but it's?
It's a big barn.
It's a big barn, he says, so?
I had the same barn in Middleborough, and when I lived out there, and this was my grandmother's property, and I was raised across the street at 35 Rock Street, and it used to be a garden that my grandmother and grandfather had, and I put up a barn because I have stuff all over the place, and I just want to gather it all in one spot and know where things are.
Very good. Miss?
I'm all set.
You're okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the petition for the pole setting?
Motion approved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Oh, you can keep it if you need it.
Yeah, it's no big deal to us. All right, so we, we had this vacation request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too. We had this vacation request last time, there was an issue about not having a contract, it's the mechanic at the golf course, and the golf committee would appreciate the request to be honored to carry over 40 hours of vacation time.
Is there any issues on this one, Mr. Keth?
It'll be the discretion of the golf committee and the Board of Selectmen, there is nothing in the contract that allows it, there's not, well, there's no contract. There's nothing that disallows it.
So the, I will say I'm not in favor of any of this stuff, right? I mean, if vacation carryover, it's, it's a bunch of garbage in my opinion, there's ample time throughout the year for everybody to be taking their vacation time, as I've said to a number of people, even if you have five freaking weeks of vacation, you take one week, one day a week, in six months you'd be done, all done with your five weeks vacation. So for anybody to be having these requests, unless it's outside of their ability, right, where we've been short-staffed in certain offices, that's a reason, and that's the way it's stated in the contract, so I'm willing to make an exemption on this particular, this particular year for this particular individual, but I hope that we don't, and the board doesn't have to be dealing with this kind of carryover in the future. It just creates a snowball effect, and if you couldn't use your three weeks or four weeks this year, and you're rolling it over to the next year, what makes us think that you're going to be able to use the extra week in the following year? It's just a big snowball effect, and it's bad management practice, so I've said this a few years now in a row, I hope when Mr. Kelly will take the bull by the horns this year, make sure everybody's using up their vacation time within the calendar year unless there's an exception to the rule, i.e. shortages of staff, like my town accountant's office, my treasurer collector's office?
Absolutely.
The selectmen's office, we've had shortages of staff, there's rationale there for people not to take vacation, and I can appreciate those folks not taking vacation to leave our office vacated, so that's things that need to be done, police department, same thing with the chief, shortage of staff, I get that, but, so, is there a motion to approve the 40 hours of vacation?
Motion to approve the 40 hours of vacation time carryover for Mr. Kevin Perkins.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have interdepartmental transfers as we do every year at the end of the year, we're transferring from the selectmen salaries to senior clerk, really it's administrative assistant, positioned to cover the transfer to assessors salaries, assistant assessors, animal control salaries director, 1,585, the first one is $1,100, treasurer salaries, assistant treasurer, 1,264, health salaries clerical, 1,492, health salaries clerical, 753, cemetery salaries temporary wages, 296, PAC salaries maintenance, $3,303, to a total cumulative balance of $9,793, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
The second interdepartmental transfer is from the police chief of police station, and it's coming from inspection salaries, building inspector, 2,120, inspector salaries, commissioner, 3,220, inspector salaries clerical, 2,942, and veterans benefits, $50,000. Transfer to police salaries overtime in the amount of $58,282 cumulative, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And again, a lot of that overtime was caused by two of our officers leaving for state barracks to improve their careers, and three of our police officers went on military leave, so thank you for those three officers for their service to our country. The third one that we have is a transfer from the reserve fund, golf reserve fund, in the amount of $40,000, in the shortfall in their budget, and they're looking to transfer to repairs and maintenance equipment, 12,500, maintenance repairs and equipment, $7,500, gasoline account, 12,500, supplies golf shop, 7,500, cumulative balance, $40,000, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the next one is for the water department, the reserve fund unforeseen expenditure. The original budget amount was 1,224,000, but this was lower to 1,154,000 due to DOR regulation. The DPW feels that we will need the additional 60 from the reserve to cover the June New Bedford bills, and we're transferring it to water, New Bedford bills, $60,000 out of that reserve account in the budget, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
So there was a, I spoke with Ms. Silva, there was a cut to the budget, I know that it was explained something about the DOR, but I think we're going to have to have a conversation because we never had this problem the previous year, so I'll be working with Ms. Silva and Todd Hassett, our town accountant, Nick Montzello, assistant town accountant, to try to get a little bit more to the bottom of the shortfall because we never had this before.
One of, one of the issues was DOR wouldn't let us anticipate the increase that we got from New Bedford on the water rates.
Yeah, I know.
And that's a discussion we're going to have to continue to have with DOR.
We will, because we've never had this issue before, so obviously we were doing something right in the past, and I don't know how DOR can sit from wherever they're sitting and look down upon us and know what we're supposed to be setting rates at versus our usage. I think Kathy and the DPW staff has done a good job, I've worked with them over numerous years, and we've never had a shortfall in the budget, so I'm going to revisit it with Ms. Silva in the town accountant's office and see if we can figure this thing out so that we don't have to be taken from reserves anymore.
I've also talked to Mr. Hassett about having DOR come down on a couple issues, and so once the audit's done, we're going to have them come down because their new team, new folks are interpreting things different than they have other teams in the past.
Well, we'll talk to them, see what that's all about. All right, so that's all set, Mr. Rocher is not here, so I'll just, I'll take that out of order if he shows up, if not, we'll put on the next selection's agenda to address Mr. Rocher. Appointment, new administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Inkley, I'll turn that over to you, you're the one that the board put responsible with Mr. Kelly to, you know, sift through all the applications and resumes and determine who would be best for the office, so?
I'll thank you, Mr. Jim. Mr. Kelly and I went through a lot of applications, and through that, we came to a decision to hire a town resident that lives in town, born and raised in this town, and she was looking for something closer to home, and I'm happy to say that she accepted, and I think she'll do a great job, and I can't wait to have a fully staffed office.
Neither can I, my friend, neither can I, we got a lot to catch up on in that office, so, Mr. Kelly, you have anything to say about Ms. Viveras' appointment?
I talked to her today, and she's ready to hit the ground running. I've talked to our present staff, we're looking at a division of duties, we're going to concentrate on her, Sydney actually being focused on the Board of Selectmen, on taking care of the books, discussing the agenda, and going through and catching up on the minutes.
That'd be a great starting point, anyway.
Absolutely.
Well, hopefully everything works out, is there a motion to appoint Sydney Viveras to the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator's Office as an administrative assistant?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And what would be that start date ASAP?
Tomorrow.
All right, very good, I want to hear. All right, we got a couple of appointments for wares, for Tilcoon Capaldi, better known as PJ Keating, is there a motion to appoint Hugo Pereira and Lenny La Toho?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we got a couple of appointments needed by the golf committee, is a golf maintenance new hire, Zachary Gonzo, is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we also have a golf weekend ranger new hire, Donald Solvo, is there a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Donald Solvo.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And this, the next one is just what town meeting voted through, is a vote to forward Article 34 from the May 2022, 2023 Town Meeting for Support and Petition in the General Court for Special Legislation to Continue the Employment of Call Fire Deputy Chief Beyond the Mandatory Retirement Age. So for everybody out there in TV land, I'm not going to get into all the mumbo jumbo that's in our books, there's a mandatory retirement age for firefighters, and I think it's police officers as well, isn't it, 50, 65? Or just anyways, for the conversation tonight, it's?
For, for the chiefs.
For the firefighters.
And the police chief.
Yep, so, and we went to town meeting in the past May, and town meeting approved it to extend that retirement age to as long as, I guess, the ability of the individual in the Board of Selectmen does have the right every year to send him for a physical and things of the like to make sure that he can fulfill his duties as a firefighter, call firefighter. And I know that they do a random test every year anyway, they're required to do a random test, it's not so much a large physical, but a random test, such as putting on your Scotts air pack and things of that in a certain timeframe to make sure they can handle that, and this individual can absolutely do it, he passed it with flying colors, so is there a motion to forward Article 34 to the General Court for Special Legislation?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to thank Call Deputy Fire Chief McCouch for his years of service and wanting to continue doing this, he loves this town and I'm glad he's, I'm glad he's here still.
Hey, he's an exceptional individual, and the town is very lucky to have individuals such as Mr. McCouch, and quite honestly, all our call fire staff is, it's great, it's great stuff.
Absolutely.
Compliments are fired upon it tremendously. So next we have a Board of Appeals Letter of Interest, Mr. Jeff White is interested in being appointed to the Board of Appeals, I've talked to Tanya in our office, I've talked to Pam Labonte, we're trying, Ms. Labonte, the town clerk, and Tanya and myself are trying to coordinate, which hasn't been done over the past several years, what we're trying to do is coordinate dates of expiration because the appointments have just been made where it's just motion to appoint, but it's never a motion to appoint to fill a position for a certain expiration date, it's kind of gone a little out of whack, so Ms. Tanya Tavaz, the administrative assistant in the Selectmen's Office, myself and Ms. Labonte are working on every time that we're doing it to try to make sure that we know whose position they're filling, so they have expiration dates, so it's not just coming up randomly, and it's been a little bit of a mess over the past several years, so we're, we're in the process of cleaning that up, so.
Excellent.
Tanya's done a tremendous job with Ms. Labonte, so for this appointment, it would be a motion to appoint Jeff White as an alternate, alternate to the zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to appoint Jeff White as an alternate to the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Conservation Commission, I'm going to pass over that, pending more information. And, I'm sorry?
Still no Mr. Rocher.
Yeah, so before we're done with that, it's okay. And, Selectmen's announcements.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, you may.
A couple announcements that the DPW asked us to make in regards to some roadwork, as everybody knows, the long-awaited Hamlin Street Bridge Repair has started, and as of right now, Hamlin Street is going to be closed for the foreseeable future, we will update you as soon as we have more information on when that will reopen, the timeline was kind of vague by the state, very vague by the state. We also have some road paving that is going to be happening, they are going to be starting milling of the road, they're going to do Middle Road from DW White to Lynn Ellen Drive, which is right in front of the school, their milling starts on the 17th of this month, and hopefully, weather permitting, the paving will be the week of the 24th, and that same exact schedule on the 17th for milling and 24th for paving, they will be doing Perry Hill Road from Memel Road all the way to the Rochester-Acushnet line, there will be one lane of travel open, and they will alternate as they switch sides, but please plan accordingly and drive slow and safe so they can get this job done and make sure we're safe on our roads.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kelly?
The, I'd like to give a shout out for a job well done to the DPW, when I came in this morning, the drain in front of our door right here had fallen in, and there was a sinkhole there, they came out right away, repaired it, and as you can see now, the public can safely access the building.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you to the DPW.
Absolutely.
I think we're finally, Mr. Manad, I think's finally got our staff almost up to full count, I know that we're dealing with one member on the staff yet to make a determination on which direction we're going to be able to go in with that one there, but, you know, I think for a small town like we are, we've operated the DPW with a very small staff, including Mr. Manad, there's only 10 folks out there, and I know some of them are watering sewer, but for a small staff in a small town, we get quite a bit of work done with that small staff, so as Mr. Kelly said, I'd like to just reach out and say thank you very much to our DPW Department for the work that they do, I know there's some folks that complain about certain issues, but we're, we only have a very small staff, and there's only so much that we can get done during a week, and when we're scheduled to do some of the bigger projects, yes, some of the smaller projects do get neglected, but we're doing our best to manage what we can with the town, we're always in discussions to figure things out, to get a better product all the time, and that's always the Board of Selectmen's goal, and I think that's always the DPW's goal, is to end up with a better product as we move forward and end this small town, so thank you to the DPW, thank you to Ms. Inkley and Mr. Woner for their support, given to the DPW and the staff, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything on the Town Administrator's Report, even though they left you off my agenda?
Not right now.
All right, future Board of Selectmen's meeting tomorrow, 5:00 PM, we do have a Board of Selectmen slash, hopefully the last time it's slash, SOL Board meeting, it's a, it's a continuance of the public hearing, I don't believe the board will be taking any action as this is in peer review, so for anybody watching this meeting that might want to show up at it, more than likely it's going to be another continuance because we are in the process of peer review, and we have to wait for that to flush its way out through the system, so I don't think it'll be much at all, maybe a five-minute meeting for a continuance, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
With that said, there's no other business?
Mr. Rocher's here.
Wait, we have, I'm going to go back.
Perfect time.
Hey, you just caught us. We have, just walked through the door, Mr. Bob Rocher, Conservation Commission Chairman. Mr. Rocher, I wanted to have you in, to recognize you and your service to the town of Acushnet, the Board of Selectmen will be presenting you this official citation, and it just says, "Be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its thankfulness to Robert Rocher, Conservation Commission, the Board of Selectmen would like to recognize you, your 21 years of service, devotion, and excellence to the Conservation Commission. Thank you for serving as a chairman for the last 17 years and for all you have done. We wish you the best of luck with your future endeavors from the Board of Selectmen."
Thank you very much, Bob.
There you go, sir, thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want to say anything to the?
Yeah, you want me to go?
Yeah, sure, if you want to say something to TV land, sure.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I happened to take a look last week at the town report from 2002 when I started, just to see who the Selectmen were and who my fellow Commissioners were, so it was Bob Seagene, Dave Tomlinson, David Wonar, and then on the commission was Greg Wood, his chair, Ted Chopper, who stayed on for a long time.
Long time.
Steve Horstfall, Patty Mandonka, who later became Patty Picard.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I've left anybody out or not, and then a guy named Len Alves was an alternate, we had, when I joined, I became the sixth member, so we still had a while before we had a seventh. I'll say to everybody that, you know, thanks for the support and for the, you know, the reappointments every three years, and I really got to see a lot of the town that I wouldn't have seen otherwise, there's some pretty interesting natural resources that I, that I would not have seen if I hadn't been invited onto people's properties and every other Saturday morning, that was, that's probably the coolest part of it, that and getting to work with some dedicated people, some people who appreciate the town and the natural resources, so that's been fun, but now I need these Wednesday nights and these Saturday mornings for some other projects I'm doing, and, you know, as I get a little bit older, I don't quite have the energy I had when I started this 21 years ago, so.
So I need that, you know, I need that brain space to be able to do those other things, which will be fun.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much for your service.
Yes.
I mean, it's been, I've known you for quite some time, Bob, and you're, you're always a straight, level-headed guy, right? You've, you don't, you don't let things get to you too much either way. And, you know, you always try to have a balanced approach to the job that you perform. So, and I think you've done an incredible job over your 21 years, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I always tried to be fair and make sure at least everybody felt heard. They may not have liked the decisions we made, but the decisions we made were based on what the Wildlands Protection Act calls for.
Absolutely.
Didn't get it perfect every time, but.
Right.
We certainly tried to be fair.
We don't live in a perfect world, my friend.
No, sir.
Unfortunately.
If only. All right.
Congratulations and thank you very much again, my friend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rocher. 21 years is a lot more than most people volunteer for. So it's, it's not saying a little thing. It's, it's very much appreciated that you took conservation so serious and protected our town. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And you're sure to promise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have fun at your last meeting too. I think that's, that's tomorrow night, right?
It is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not going to go through all the, um, open vacancies, but sometimes the list just isn't right. Um, and I'm working with Tanya and Ms. Labonte, as I said. And we'll see what happens in the, in the next meeting. We'll have an updated version. And I did speak with Tanya today about the website. That means there's a lot of things on the website for committees and boards that need updating.
Sure.
So that'll be something she works on as well. Um, some people that are listed on there just don't even exist and haven't existed for quite some time. So, um, again, Tanya's plate has been full. Um, I'm happy that we, the board of selectmen have now hired the, um, the other administrative assistant for our office to help Mr. Kelly along. Um, and Tanya, we can free her up doing some other things that are necessary to get us to be back to being a little bit more professional than we used to be.
Absolutely.
Everything should be updated. The website needs to be accurate. So we'll be working on that. So anything that you find, I know you're an internet guy. If there's anything on the website that you find that needs correction, just make out a little punch list and just hand it off to Tanya and she can work on it. As, you know, she gets time.
Yeah.
I think for the first few weeks, she'll, we'll have a little transition with Mr. Kelly, Ms. Viveras. That's correct. And Ms. Tavaz doing what they need to do and reshuffling the deck and figuring out the office. And hopefully it'll take a couple of weeks and everybody will be acclimated and, you know, we'll be able to get some, get a little more productivity out of our office, which is, um, much needed. So, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just want to, uh, just mention Tanya Tavaz again, pulling off pretty much everything she needed to do for us, uh, while being short-staffed. Um, going above and beyond, making sure we're always in the loop. And I just want to extend my appreciation to everything that she has done, being short-staffed up till now and making sure that office didn't fall apart and making sure everybody was informed and covered. So I appreciate you, Tanya.
Yeah, she's done a hell of a job juggling. And at first she was still back and forth with the billing department, you know. I'll give her this much credit. She never complained.
Nope, always had a smile on her face.
Pretty good stuff. All right, with no further business, the next board of selectmen's meeting is scheduled for July 25, 2023. 4:00 PM, 4:30 or if you, whatever.
4:30 is fine.
4:30 is good.
That's good.
So we'll set it for temporary or preliminary to 4:30. See if Mr. Warner, he's not here. Um, but we'll talk to him, make sure 4:30 works for him. As well, Mr. Kelly will communicate that to him. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?